Hi, Katrina.
Perfect, thanks. Councillor Dominado, are you online?
Yes, I'm here, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
We now call the public hearing of May 17, 2022 to order. This meeting is being convened by electronic means. As such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. For council members participating by electronic means, please ensure your video is turned on. Let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Council, we are just at quorum. Everything else is, everybody else is in LOA. So all of you are needed to stay on the line else we break quorum and we'd really appreciate you having your video on, please. Council members are reminded that in accordance with Section 14.13 of the procedure bylaw, members must enable their video, oh, did I just read that? Sorry. If council members attend by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the meeting, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process and that contact information has been circulated. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link which will be tweeted out on @VanCityClerk. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Wauti's people and thank them for having cared for this land. Looking forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize the incredible contributions of Vancouver City staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have the roll? Paul, please.
Mayor Stewart has a leave of absence for personal business. Councillor Carr is in the chair. Councillor DeGenova?
Present.
Councillor Frye has a leave of absence for civic business. Councillor Swanson is also on a leave of absence from six to seven for personal reasons. Councillor Hardwick? Not online yet. Councillor Weeb?
Present.
Councillor Boyle has a leave of absence for personal business. Councillor Dominado?
Present.
Councillor Bly?
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young?
Present.
You've quorumed Deputy Mayor Carr.
Great, thank you. Before we begin, I'll have a few announcements to give you. The public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments to council, or speaking in person. Speakers have five minutes to make comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers shall also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may participate by electronic means. Please ensure your video is turned on. Let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Council, we are just at quorum. Everything else is, everybody else is in LOA. So all of you are needed to stay on the line else we break quorum and we'd really appreciate you having your video on, please. Council members are reminded that in accordance with Section 14.13 of the procedure bylaw, members must enable their video, oh, did I just read that? Sorry. If council members attend by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the meeting, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process and that contact information has been circulated. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link which will be tweeted out on @VanCityClerk. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Wauti's people and thank them for having cared for this land. Looking forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize the incredible contributions of Vancouver City staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have the roll? Paul, please.
Mayor Stewart has a leave of absence for personal business. Councillor Carr is in the chair. Councillor DeGenova?
Present.
Councillor Frye has a leave of absence for civic business. Councillor Swanson is also on a leave of absence from six to seven for personal reasons. Councillor Hardwick? Not online yet. Councillor Weeb?
Present.
Councillor Boyle has a leave of absence for personal business. Councillor Dominado?
Present.
Councillor Bly?
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young?
Present.
You've quorumed Deputy Mayor Carr.
Great, thank you. Before we begin, I'll have a few announcements to give you. The public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments to council, or speaking in person. Speakers have five minutes to make comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers shall also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may participate by electronic means. Please ensure your video is turned on. Let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. Council, we are just at quorum. Everything else is, everybody else is in LOA. So all of you are needed to stay on the line else we break quorum and we'd really appreciate you having your video on, please. Council members are reminded that in accordance with Section 14.13 of the procedure bylaw, members must enable their video, oh, did I just read that? Sorry. If council members attend by electronic means lose connection during any portion of the meeting, we will recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council members lose connection during the voting process, staff will get you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process and that contact information has been circulated. Members of the public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link which will be tweeted out on @VanCityClerk. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Wauti's people and thank them for having cared for this land. Looking forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize the incredible contributions of Vancouver City staff who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have the roll? Paul, please.
Mayor Stewart has a leave of absence for personal business. Councillor Carr is in the chair. Councillor DeGenova?
Present.
Councillor Frye has a leave of absence for civic business. Councillor Swanson is also on a leave of absence from six to seven for personal reasons. Councillor Hardwick? Not online yet. Councillor Weeb?
Present.
Councillor Boyle has a leave of absence for personal business. Councillor Dominado?
Present.
Councillor Bly?
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young?
Present.
You've quorumed Deputy Mayor Carr.
Great, thank you. Before we begin, I'll have a few announcements to give you. The public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments to council, or speaking in person. Speakers have five minutes to make comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers shall also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may participate by electronic means. Please ensure your video is turned on. Let the clerk know if you leave the meeting for the purposes of confirming quorum. I also want to take a moment to recognize the incredible contributions of Vancouver City staff, who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have the roll, Paul, please?
Mayor Stewart has a leave of absence for personal business. Councilor Carr is in the chair. Councilor DeGenova?
Present.
Councilor Frye has a leave of absence for civic business. Councilor Swanson is also on a leave of absence from six to seven for personal reasons. Councilor Hardwick? Not online yet. Councilor Weeb?
Present.
Councilor Boyle has a leave of absence for personal business. Councilor Dominado?
Present.
Councilor By?
Present.
Councilor Kirby Young?
Present.
You've quorum Deputy Mayor Carr.
Great, thank you. Before we begin, I'll have a few announcements to give you. The public may participate by speaking over the phone, submitting written comments to council, or speaking in person. Speakers have five minutes to make comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers shall also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations, and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may speak only once and should follow along at Twitter, @VanCityClerk, for updates on the progress of the meeting, so you don't miss your turn. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web form at vancouver.ca backslash public dash hearing dash comments. The link is also going to be tweeted. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak, only if those being represented confirm that they are also on the line or in person, and must not be speakers themselves. I also want to note the city's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. And I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, please avoid using gendered honorifics. Instead, refer to the person by first and last name, or role, or title. A reminder that council's role in a public hearing is a quasi judicial body, which means councils only to consider the merits of the resoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from speakers, council may: one, approve the application in principle; two, refuse the application; or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene on May 26 at 6:00 PM here in the council chamber. So, we're moving on to item one on our agenda, which is miscellaneous amendments concerning various CD bylaws. And, first of all, does any member of council wish to declare a conflict of interest in item one? Seeing none, we can move forward. Clerk, please read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability to make miscellaneous amendments to CD 1-801 at 1636 Clark Drive and 1321 to 1395 East First Avenue, CD 1-792 at 445 Kingsway and 2935 St. George Street, CD 1-804 at 6825 West Boulevard, and CD 1-386 at 1001 Hornby Street, 1050 and 1088 Berard Street, to improve clarity, update references, correct inadvertent errors or omissions, and/or improve the administration of the bylaws. No correspondence has been received on this application since referral to public hearing.
Great, thank you so much, Clerk. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound, before the close of speakers' lists. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers' list. We do have Simon J., rezoning planner, with the rezoning center to present the application. And I do just want to confirm for members of council that there are no registered speakers to this item. So if you wish, you can move to waive the presentation.
Move to waive the presentation, Councilor DeGenova?
Thank you, Councilor DeGenova. Thank you so much, Councilor Kirby Young. Thank you, staff, for being here. We'll move on. Oh, wait, you might want to see there. Are there any questions from councillors to staff? I am not seeing any questions, so it's great. So, we will now hear from the public. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound, before the close of the speakers' list. And the phone number will be tweeted out again. And any speakers in the council chamber, please come forward. I'm not seeing that. So Clerk, do we have any speakers on the line to provide comments?
No speakers on the line, Chair.
Okay. I will now call a second time. If there are any speakers who wish to speak, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound, before the close of the speakers' list. Phone number will be tweeted out and made available. Any speakers, come forward. Nobody's in the chambers. Clerk, is there any speakers on the line?
No speakers on the line, Chair.
Okay, I'll call for a third and final time. If there are any speakers wishing to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound. The phone number will be tweeted out, made available. And I'm just going to leave it at that. We're in our third call. We're waiting five minutes to see if anybody calls in. There's no one in chambers to speak to it. So, councillors, don't please go too far away. Be back in five minutes. Those on the line now, you are quorum. We don't have any additional members. So, appreciate you having your videos on and returning in five minutes. Thank you. Clerk? Okay, that's great. Clerk, do we have anybody on the line to speak to this item?
No speakers, Deputy Mayor.
Okay.
Councilor Carr, point of privilege.
Yes, go ahead.
I can't access my remote desktop, I suspect because of the settings at my desktop in the chamber. I wonder if I can check.
Yes, we've got IT staff going right to your computer.
Thank you very much.
Yep, no problem. Meanwhile, if you need a vote assist, just let me know.
Okay.
Okay, so, seeing no additional speakers, the speakers' list is now closed. And as few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking any further questions of staff and making a decision. Staff, do you have any closing comments?
No comments from staff.
That's great. Council, do you have any questions to staff? Councilor DeGenova, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I must have gone too early. I was prepared to move the motion, but if others have questions.
Okay, thank you. So, there are no questions to staff. I'm switching us to a main queue. Councilor DeGenova, just hit that button again. I'll advance you. Go ahead.
Happy to move the recommendations and support this motion, or the recommendation. Thank you.
I need a secondary. Somebody?
Councilor Kirby Young.
Thank you. Okay, the motion is moved, and the recommendations are moved, and seconded. Anybody wish to speak to this? Councilor DeGenova, do you want to speak to it?
I'm just happy to speak in support, as I've mentioned before, and I'll leave it there.
Great, thanks so much. Yes, I think, Clerk, you can move us to a vote.
Vote assist in favor, please.
Ah, thank you. Yes, we've got that noted.
Councilor By, I also require a vote assist in favor, please.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Okay, so it's going to be corrected. It was already entered as a vote, but we have, Councilor By, your vote will be entered. And that is a unanimous decision. Thank you, council. And we're moving right along to item two, rezoning of 160 West 44th Avenue. So, just a second. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on this item? Seeing no one. Clerk, could you please read the application and summary of correspondence received?
This is an application by Matthew Chang, Architect Incorporated, to rezone 160 West 44th Avenue from RS1 Single Detached Houses and Duplexes District to RM8A Multiple Dwelling District, to allow for a townhouse or rowhouse development with a maximum floor space ratio of 1.2. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. No correspondence has been received on this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Great, thank you. We have Simon J., planner with the rezoning center, to speak to the application. Simon J.'s here, and we do have a speaker registered. One speaker registered. Council, it's up to you whether you want to hear the presentation. Councilor Hardwick, go ahead. Councilor Har-
I have a question of staff. Do we need to speak?
Move to waive the presentation.
Okay, and well, I'll need a secondary for that. To move the- This doesn't mean, Councilor Hardwick, that you don't get to ask questions. You still get to ask questions.
I'll second it, then.
Great, thank you. So, no presentation, but staff is here to answer questions. All those in favor of moving to waive the presentation, all say aye? Or yea? Any opposed, say nay? All right. So, thank you, Councilor Hardwick. You are on the queue for asking questions to staff. Go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to confirm. In the description, it suggests that this will be a townhouse or rowhouse development. Will this be strata titled?
Yes, this will be strata titled.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Hardwick. Anyone else? Great. So, I will move on to the speakers, and I'm, excuse me, going to ask again. Oh, I'm sorry, there is. Oh, my apologies. Yes, applicant. If the applicant would wish to address council, please come forward.
Mr. Matthew Chang, I'm the architect and applicant. I will wait for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Council, you are able to ask any questions you wish of the applicant now? Okay, I'm seeing no questions, so we can move on to hearing from the public. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound, for the close of this list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on live stream. Any speakers in council chamber, come forward. I do not see any speakers. Forward. However, do we have speakers on the line to provide comments? Is Ekta Singh on the line?
Yes, hi.
Oh, great. Good. You have five minutes to address council. Go ahead.
Great. So again, my name is Ekta Singh, and I'm a current resident of the block that this development is proposed for. I just wanted to take this opportunity to voice some concerns regarding this development. I had voiced similar concerns in writing back when the neighboring and identical proposal was set for the 168 West 44th. This was a few years ago. But I didn't receive any response at the time, and I believe that development was approved. This time around, the main concern that I have regarding this development is how the townhomes or how the townhomes will be in the middle of the city block, with the rest being single-family homes. While I'm not opposed to the development, it has to make sense and fit the feel of the overall neighborhood. This development just seems like it's very out of place and doesn't feel the overall, fit the overall feel of the rest of the block. If the development, for example, was at a corner or included more than just one lot, it might make more sense, but it just seems like we're just approving things for the sake of approving them. There's single-family homes all the way around the rest of the blocks around it. The next concern I have is around parking. Parking is already a problem in this area. For example, students parking and walking to Langirre College, people parking and walking to the Oak Ridge Catalina, and then using the park. So, in the summer months, due to the Columbia Park field rentals, people are playing softball. Just the other day, yesterday it was. It's really hard to find parking, so I question what plans have been put into place to mitigate parking in front of homes that don't belong to people that live in them, which is already a big problem. When we do call into 311, action isn't taken, or it's taken too late. So I just see that problem growing and growing. And then I do understand that there's permit parking available, but there's a fee involved. So it seems unfair that residents that are not part of the development face these yearly fees after it goes up. So while the plans do include what seems like underground parking for residents in the townhomes, households may have one more than one vehicle. And it's already a problem in this area. Adding 12 additional homes will only add to the issue. While I do understand that the city is encouraging transit and other modes of transportation, right now, it's just not the reality. We're not there yet. So yeah, I just hope that the council will take these concerns around retaining the feel So yeah, I just hope that the council will take these concerns around retaining the feel of the block, which is all single-family homes, and the issues of parking and take count, with developments seemingly getting approved so commonly nowadays. I'm not sure that I'm optimistic that change will, this will change anything, but I thought I'd share my concerns anyways. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. Thanks very much for sharing your perspective on this. And you do, if you don't mind staying on the line, have questions? Counselor Hardwick, go ahead. Up to three, three, five minutes to ask questions, sorry, five.
Thank you very much. Thank you for speaking with us today. You mentioned this, there was a similar development that has occurred over the last couple of years. Have you lived there through that whole period?
Yes, so we were here during that period, and there was time to give feedback at the time. We sent in some concerns, which are exactly the same as now, so.
Do you realize that the Cambie Corridor Plan governs all of these properties? So that you would expect under that plan to see more of this happening in the neighborhood?
Absolutely. So I'm aware of the Cambie Corridor Plan, but, for example, we are neighboring the two developments. If we had been asked, oh, do you, like, for example, taking more than just one lot at a time and changing half a block, or more than like five houses in a row, for example, it's happening diagonal across Columbia Park. That makes more sense, but putting a development like this in the middle of a city block, to me, just doesn't make much sense. It doesn't really help with the densification plans that the city has, so that's just my opinion, but.
So what you're saying is that it's not granular enough in its nuance?
Yeah, it just seems to be popping up in the middle of blocks, whereas if it was well thought out, we've spoken to neighbors in the area, and if it was, for example, five houses, five lots in a row, that makes more sense, because it actually, you can put more housing, and it doesn't look like it's just randomly selected. This is happening across the park, and it makes a lot more sense. It looks better, rather than just being plopped right in the middle of the city block, where the townhomes are going to be higher than the other properties, and it just, it just seems out of place, so.
Are you seeing speculative activity in the neighborhood?
Can you clarify what you mean by that?
I mean land, real estate speculation, because any of these, now that, you know, with the plan in place, you know, basically anybody can sell and create projects like this. So I'm just wondering what you're seeing. Are you seeing it pop up with more regularity? What's, what's the mood of the neighborhood?
Well, right now, in the neighborhood, I haven't seen, like, this kind of development be, at least start construction yet, which is in the middle of a city block. It all seems to be on the corners or taking into account multiple lots, for example. This is the first in, from what I've seen at least, where it's just been on a, you know, a regular lot, one lot, where there's multiple townhomes going in, so I don't know if that's helped clarify that question or not, but, yeah.
Yeah. No, I'm just, I'm just trying to picture it. I know, I know the neighborhood, and I'm trying to get a sense of the pace of change.
Yeah, and again, I'm not opposed to development at all. It just seems, it just seems out of place to be in the middle of a city block with one lot only being developed, so.
So far.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thanks, Counselor Hardwick. And you do have more questions? Go ahead, Counselor Kirby Young with questions.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thanks for speaking tonight. I just, when you raised your comments or concerns around parking, you talked about permit parking being available, but suggested it was unfair for residents to pay. I'm just wondering, if you're in a single-family home, I think you said, do you have access to off-street parking?
Unfortunately, no. We live in an older home, and there's no parking at the back or anything, or we don't have a garage that we use. So it's just on-the-street parking. My husband and I both drive vehicles, so just to, yeah, find parking is tough sometimes.
Okay, but you do, just to be clear, you, you do have, it is permitted currently? You do have an option to apply if you would like to?
Yeah, if we want to, because I've called in to ask. I believe there was a fee, yearly fee of a couple hundred dollars that we can get everybody's approval on the street to get it done, but right now, it's, there's no permitted parking or anything like that.
Okay, I'm going to ask for some clarification questions, because typically, the city determines for the permit parking, and the fees would come usually in form of a modest fee to local area residents that would qualify that live in the area, but I will ask that clarification around that process of staff. Thank you for raising that.
Yeah, no problem.
Great, and that is it for your questions. Again, thank you very much for taking the time to speak to counsel. That's great.
Okay, thank you for listening.
Okay, I'm going to call for other speakers. So if any speakers wish to speak to counsel on this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chambers can come forward, and there aren't any. Clerk, are there any speakers on the line?
No speakers on the line, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'll call again. Any speakers who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. Phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Clerk, are there any speakers on the line to this item?
No additional speakers, Deputy Mayor.
Great. I'll call for the third and final time. If there are any speakers for the item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the list. And we will take a five-minute break to see if anybody calls on this item. Great, clerk, are there any speakers on the line to this item?
No speakers, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, as few, seeing no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. And as few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I now suggest we close the receipt of public comment, move on to hearing closing comments, asking any further questions of staff, and making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, thank you.
Okay. Staff, do you have any closing comments?
No, we don't.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? I do see that there are some counselors on the list. Counselor, will you go ahead?
Yeah, my question to staff is on, how many units?
Counselor, we, your mic is very, like, you can, we can hardly hear you. Can you just speak more directly, perhaps? Into a, that's still very faint. Try again.
Hear me now?
Slightly better, but I think staff are still having difficulty hearing you.
Okay, I will.
I don't believe that we can hear you sufficiently. I mean, staff, you can let me know. Can you hear him sufficiently?
Can you hear me now or no?
Oh, way better. Yes. Go ahead with your questions. Counselor, we, go ahead.
Yeah, so to the speaker's comments, how many units do we expect on a property like this? And how do we make sure it works with the single-family homes around it when these are done mid-block?
So for this type of lot, it would be five to six units per lot. The applicant has indicated that they're intending six units. And then the design aesthetic would be worked out through the DP process.
Okay, thank you.
Great, yes. That's it for questions. Thanks so much.
Yeah, it's Mr. Carr. Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't have any, I don't have any connectivity. Can I ask a question, please?
Absolutely. I'll put you on the list. Don't, don't worry. Just one second. Yes, go ahead now.
Yeah, thank you. Also, following up on the speaker's comments, with respect to parking, it sounded like, at first, they suggested that there wasn't permit parking, but that there was an option to have, but that application not yet been made. I wonder if staff can clarify that there isn't permit parking in the immediate area, and is there an intention or a plan to bring that forward? Or is that something that has to be initiated by residents? And if so, what is the process?
Yes, there is permit parking in the area, but not on this particular block. If the block wishes to bring it forward, then they can. They can, they need 50% of the block plus one, and then it would be approximately a $50 permit fee annually.
Okay, but there's no cost for, other than the annual permit fee, there is not a cost, as the speaker mentioned, to bring the application forward? Is that correct?
Sorry, I didn't quite catch that question.
I said, other than the annual fee, if that were granted to be made permit parking, there isn't a cost to request that it be made permit parking if they get the requisite number of signatures. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and then just to clarify, is it something that, is not something that staff are looking at in terms of the density that's going into this area? I know we've proved a couple of other larger rental projects kind of fronting onto Columbia Park.
The staff review the existing permit parking areas, but there's no plan for adding additional ones that would be resident-initiated.
Okay, and then final question. Can you just clarify for the record if there's any parking provided with the townhome?
So the townhome development would have to provide parking as per the parking bylaw. So onsite, yeah, onsite.
So, and is that, what's the ratio?
Oh, I think it's 0.8, maybe 0.6 or 0.8.
Okay.
Per unit, sorry, per unit, parking spot per unit, and then also visitor parking spot as well.
Okay, so you won't have all of those six residents in the six homes necessarily parking on the street in this block, correct?
Yeah, so the development has to provide onsite parking. And so it would work out to be, for six units, about six parking spots.
I think we do have-
So unlike, say, the single-family home where, in the case of the speaker just using them as an example, they don't have off-street parking, the, this development would have its own off-street parking?
Correct, it would have its own off-street parking.
I do believe there's another staff member wanting to comment on your questions? Nope? Oh, it's okay, I guess. It was answered for you. Counselor Kirby Young, are you done?
I am. Thank you, Chair Carr.
Great, thank you. Counselor DeGenova, up to five minutes for questions for you.
That was, that was really helpful, clarifying information. I'm happy to move the recommendations when appropriate, Chair.
There's no one else on the list, so go ahead, Counselor DeGenova.
So moved.
Thank you. And secondary, please?
Kirby Young.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby Young. Any debate on the matter? Counselor DeGenova, are you, no, I'm going to move us to the main queue, and I believe Counselor Hardwick, did you get on that list?
I believe so.
Yeah, I had to move us over to main queue. Counselor DeGenova to the motion.
Just wanted to thank the speaker who came out to speak, and really appreciate staff's answers to the questions related to and regarding parking. Something that often comes up. That being said, I'm satisfied with the answers, and I will be supporting the recommendations that have been brought forward by staff. So I'll, I'll leave it there. I'll keep it short, but I will be supporting. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor DeGenova. Counselor Hardwick, up to you for five minutes.
Right, thank you very much. So, again, strata townhouses will inflate the land and value proportionately. And again, looking at the volume of these rezonings that we've processed, this is continuing to contribute to the land inflation problem that underlies our housing affordability. So I will not be supporting this application.
Thank you, Counselor Hardwick. And I see no one else on the list, so clerk, if you could move us to a voting queue, please.
Vote assist in favor, please, Chair Carr.
And that was Counselor Kirby Young, I believe?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Swanson, is she on the line yet? Okay, Counselor Swanson, you haven't yet voted.
I'm here, but I wasn't here for the beginning, so I don't think I should-
I'm here, but I wasn't here for the beginning, so I don't think I should vote.
Okay. Great. That does pass with one in opposition, Counselor Hardwick. Okay, that's great. Thanks, counsel. We are now moving on to item three, which is CD1 zoning, 7969 to 7989, Camby Street. Does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on this? I see no one. Clerk, could you please read the application and summary of correspondence?
This is an application by Good Group to rezone 7969 to 7989, Camby Street, from RS1 Residential District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a six-story residential building with 27 strata-titled residential units. A building height of 20.5 meters, with additional height for rooftop amenity, and the mechanical pertinence and a floor space ratio of 2.4 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. No correspondence has been received in this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Great. Thank you. So we're looking for speakers to this item. Anybody who wishes to speak, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the list. That number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. We have Allison Smith, Planner for the Resoning Center, to speak to the application. There are no registered speakers, so counsel, it's up to you whether you wish to hear this presentation or not.
Move to wave presentation.
Thanks, Counselor Domeneau, want a second? Was that a second by Counselor Digenova?
It was.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of moving to wave, say aye. Or yea.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Great. Thank you so much for being here. But we can move forward, I think, to the applicant team. With the applicant team, wish to speak to this application?
Hello, this is Dan Lindner from GUD Group. Be very happy to present this project and hope you will like it too. So welcome any questions, and thanks very much.
Great, thank you. So counsel, do you have any questions to staff or to the applicant team? And I know that this is the only time you have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. I am not seeing any questions, so I believe I can just move forward with calling for more speakers to this item. If there are any speakers, please call counsel... Sorry, who wishes to speak to counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the list. The phone number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chamber can come forward. I see no speakers in the council chamber. We have speakers on the line? No? Well, I guess, I don't think we have. But Clerk, could you confirm if there are any speakers on the line to speak to this item?
No speakers on the line, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So if there are, I'll call again for additional speakers. Any speakers who wish to speak to us on this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the list. Phone number will be tweeted out, made available on live stream. Any speakers in chambers? There are none. Clerk, are there any on the line?
No speakers on the line, Deputy Mayor.
I'll call a second time. If there are any speakers for this item to wish to speak to us, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the list. That number will be tweeted out, made available. Are there any speakers on the line? Nope, not yet. That was my second, this is my second time. I have to do one more time.
No speakers, Mayor, Deputy Mayor.
There's no one in chambers. So for my third time, any speakers for this item? Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the list. And we will take a five-minute break to see if anyone calls in on this item. Okay, counsel, I'm seeing no additional speakers. Oh, sorry. I see no. But Clerk, are there any on the line?
No speakers on the line.
Great, thank you. The speaker's list is now closed. As few or no public comments were received after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and then move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and making a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Staff, do you have any closing comments?
No closing comments from staff.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? I'm seeing none. Counsel, we are at the point of making a decision. Do you have a mover?
We'll move, Counselor Kirby Young.
Thank you. Seconder?
Second, Counsel Bly.
Counsel Domeneau.
I think Counselor Bly was the first voice I heard, a second. So is there any debate on this? I am seeing no debate. So Clerk, you can move us to a voting queue. Okay. Counselor Digenova, do you need a vote assist? Counselor Digenova? Okay, she's not there. All right. And Counselor Swanson? Yes, you have, Counselor Swanson, do you need a vote assist? Okay. So that vote does pass with two in opposition, Counselor Swanson and Hardwick. Okay. Thanks so much, staff, for that. And we are now moving on to item four, CD1 zoning, 1668 to 1684 Alburne Street. First of all, does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest on item four? Not seeing any. Clerk, could you please read the application and summary of correspondence?
This is an application by BingTom Architects to rezone 1668 to 1684 Alburne Street from Multiple Dwelling District to Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a 40-story residential building with 128 strata-titled residential units. A height of 117.3 meters and a floor space ratio of 10.81 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to the conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing, 12 pieces in support and seven pieces in opposition, and this represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great, thanks so much. Anybody who wishes to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code, sorry, code 1061445 pound before the close of the list. That number will be tweeted out and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for those on the phone or in person to speak at the end of the registered speakers list. We have Leifke Visers, Resoning Planner, with the Resoning Center to present the application. And there are registered speakers to this item, counsel, so I suggest we move ahead with the presentation. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and counsel. Can you see my presentation? My name is Leifke Visers, and I'm the Resoning Planner for the application at 1668 to 1684 Alburne Street. Before I begin, staff would like to advise counsel that a resoning memo was added to the agenda package. The purpose of this memo is to correct an error related to exclusions for amenity areas in the posted draft CD1 bylaw and to include a condition related to public art contributions for rezonings. I'll now proceed with my presentation. This site is located in the West End, on the south side of Alburne Street, east of Fidwell. The site is currently zoned RM5C. This area is served by a number of community amenities and centers, as well as schools, parks, and other amenities. The subject site, shown in red, is surrounded by a number of recently-approved residential towers with heights up to 385 feet. The site is currently occupied by two strata-titled residential towers. The site falls within Area A of the Georgia Corridor of the West End Plan. Floor plates of up to 5,500 square feet may be considered with building heights up to 385 feet. Tower separation of 80 feet is required. This application meets the floor plate height and tower separation requirements. The application proposes to rezone the site from RM5C, which currently will allow residential and commercial uses with a maximum height of 58 meters and a maximum density of 2.2 FSR to a CD1 district. In accordance with the West End Plan, the proposed CD1 bylaw would allow for a four-story residential tower with a maximum height of 385 feet. This application was submitted in August of 2017, including revisions to the foreign development and CAC negotiation process, which concluded in the fall of 2021. Approximately 500 new onsite and offsite construction jobs will be created. The proposal is aligned with the West End Plan. This application falls into a view cone shadow created by pre-existing development, which will conceal all building elements under 400 feet within the proposed view, thereby enabling consideration of a tower up to the proposed height. As illustrated here, an existing tower shadows Marina Square Park. This project falls into the existing sun shadow, which is not contribute additional sun shadow. The additional shadow cast by this application is illustrated in orange and does not impact a park between 10 and 4 at the Equinox. A city-hosted open house saw 54 attendees. Feedback included support for the building's design, sustainable features, and policy context. Concerns included affordability of the housing and the impact on local traffic. A cash CAC of $37 million is proposed. Real estate services staff have reviewed the applicant's development pro forma and concluded that the total CAC offered by the applicant is appropriate and support accepting it. If approved, the cash CAC will be allocated to support delivery of the West End Public Benefit Strategy. DCLs totaling approximately $6.6 million and a public art contribution of $460,000 are also expected. While some areas of the West End envision in-kind amenity contributions, such as nonprofit office space and a percentage of housing as affordable, cash CACs are identified in the Georgia Corridor, which are intended to help fund benefits throughout the West End as per the West End Public Benefit Strategy. In conclusion, this proposal meets the requirements of the West End Plan and the rezoning policy for the West End. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report and within the staff memo. Staff would like to reiterate to counsel that a rezoning memo was added to the agenda package. The purpose of this memo is to correct an error related to exclusions for amenity areas in the proposed CD1 bylaw and to include a condition related to the public art contributions for rezonings. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Counsel, there'll be questions after we also hear from the applicant. So first of all, is the applicant team here to speak or online to speak to the application? Do we have the applicant team there? Clerk, are we aware if the applicant team is online or not? They are online, apparently, counsel, but perhaps not hearing or not connecting properly. They are online, so I'm just going to take some advice from the clerk. Normally, they're... Normally, this is the only time that we can hear from the applicant team. Clerk, is there any way we can get hold of the applicant team other than them being online the way they are now but not responding?
Hello, Deputy Mayor, can you hear me now?
Ah, yes. Yes, we can.
Sorry, kind of our part, apologies.
No.
Yes, my name is Lee Young, sorry, with West Bank Project, project manager, and with Ian Duke Development Manager. The rest of our project team is here. The architect, Reverie Architect. BingTom Architect is the former name, is now Reverie, just as a point of clarification. Benalyn and Kyle are here as architects. PFS, the landscape architect is here, Chris Miramore. Recollective Sustainability, Jason Walker, excuse me if I got last name wrong. And then we've got Chris Chang from Bunt as well. Thank you.
Okay, now, do you have a presentation or are you just open for questions?
No, Deputy Mayor, we're not doing a presentation. We're here to respond to any questions that counsel or staff may be directing to us. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, thank you so much. Counsel, I see that we have got some speakers on the list, and you can ask questions to either the applicant or to our staff. Counsel Kirby Young, you're first, up to five minutes.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll start with a question to staff, and it's with respect to the fact that this is a very significant CAC that this project is generating due to density and the strata tenure. And I know you allocate it and go towards the West End Plan, and there's a lot of amenities have been long awaiting that contribution. Can staff speak to specifically if they envision this is going to go towards a specific project? And also, could it go, for example, towards the Aquatic Center, noting that we had the side of the building fall off, and that's been deemed end of use? And as a project slated in the capital plan, is it envisioned to go towards that specifically?
Thank you for the question, Counsel Kirby Young. We have Thomas Daly on the line to answer that question.
Thomas, did you?
I only have limited time, so.
I think someone else is going to answer that question.
Hi there. Hi, it's Teen Fan, senior rezoning planner. Sorry for that mistake, Counsel Kirby Young. Yep, we definitely believe that the CAC allocated here could go towards significant capital projects in the West End, including the Aquatic Center and the Community Center, which is being co-located with the King George School.
So a follow-up on that, then. How would counsel have comfort, given kind of the dire state of the Aquatic Center, that it would be going specifically to those two projects and the long-awaited Community Center renewal?
Absolutely.
Without finding any specific direction or within the confines of the CAC bylaws?
Thanks, Counsel Kirby Young. We have a very robust public benefit strategy. It identifies both of those amenities along with this capital plan process that will go to counsel in July, for which I believe the two items which you just referred to are part of that amenity package. So should counsel approve that capital plan for 2023, which does include these two items, it would give counsel comfort in knowing that a CAC generated from this project could go towards seeing those two items being realized.
Okay. And the timing aligns in terms of receipt of the CACs and the capital plan? I'm just reflecting that back for clarity.
Absolutely. CACs are collected at the time of enactment, and that usually takes about a year. So if the capital plan is 2023 for the next four years, we could see that as being CACs collected for those particular amenities, yes.
Okay. I'll leave it there to keep some time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Kirby Young. Counsel DeGenova, over to you. Counsel DeGenova, you may be on mute.
I was double meaning it, thank you, Chair. My first question is to staff, and actually, just to follow up on the previous question. It would be precedent setting, wouldn't it, to specifically direct CACs from a project that doesn't have approval yet to a specific amenity? Is that correct? Is that why, although you can assure us that there could be some provisions for that, we don't see that often at public hearing?
Thank you for the question, Counsel Genova. We have Chris Kleben on the line to answer this question.
Thank you.
Hi, Counsel DeGenova, Chris Kleben, planning department. You're correct, it is unusual for counsel to allocate CACs specifically to one project. It is the structure set up so that CACs are allocated to the community plan, public benefit strategy, where we've done comprehensive needs analysis. Once we have those dollars collecting interest in a reserve allocated to the West End through the capital plan process, that is the opportunity, and also through annual capital budget reports to allocate dollars to specific projects. That is a second route where those types of plans go to counsel for consideration, for allocation to specific capital projects.
Okay. Thanks very much for answering that question. I appreciate it. I was also wondering if you could speak a little bit to the need for residential and family housing in the West End Plan and specifically in this project, how that would help to increase and meet the City of Vancouver's goals? Staff?
Thank you for the question, Counsel Genova. This application is conditioned to meet the housing mix guidelines as set up by the city, and that's in the conditions in Appendix B of the report.
Okay. And I see that there is childcare, actually, specific childcare sites that are listed nearby. Are those childcare, are those childcares that have current vacancies? Or are those just names of childcares nearby?
There are a number of childcare. Thank you for the question, Counsel DeGenova. There are a number of childcares nearby. There are also a number of childcares that are in the process of being developed that have funding through the West End Public Benefit Strategy.
Okay, that's very helpful. I'll leave my questions there right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Genova. Counsel Swanson?
Yeah, I don't know if this is for the applicant or for staff, but I'm seeing from the report that this project would replace 23 strata units, some of which are rented. I'm wondering if somebody knows how many of them are rented and if there will be any form of compensation to the demovicted strata renters?
Thank you for the question. As this application came in in 2017, and these are both strata wind-ups, the TRP doesn't apply to the existing tenants. The tenants were either owners who were part of the strata wind-up or are residents who've begun renting after the application was received.
So, and you don't know how many renters there are?
Thank you for the question. The applicant team is on the line and can speak to the number of renters that are currently in the buildings.
Hi there, it's Ian Duke with West Bank. We have, I believe, all of the units currently have month-to-month tenants in the building. We did not want to leave these units unoccupied through the housing crisis in the city, so we have amenities available to be rented as we've taken the project through the course of the rezoning process. We would be giving the existing tenants plenty of notice when we are closer to the time when we know when construction would start and we'd need to have vacant possession. But as I said, the current tenants have all been brought in on the basis that they're on month-to-month tenancies as we bring the project through the approvals process.
Are you going to be giving them anything like moving expenses or a bit of a rent top-up for their new place?
We've actually been, most of the tenants are in place on quite below-market terms and have had on their radar that their tendencies are month-to-month, and we keep them apprised of our progress through this rezoning process, which has taken several years longer than we originally anticipated. We originally didn't expect to make these units available for rental, but given the fact that the process was protracted, particularly by the COVID crisis, we decided to make them available. We, you know, once we give notice to tenants of the impending construction, as I said, we give them far more than the usual notice that might be given in these circumstances.
Okay. Great, thanks, Counsel Swanson. And that's it for questions from counselors. So we'll now turn to hearing from the public. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel? Please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the list, and that number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. Any speakers in the council chambers can come forward? I see nobody in the council chambers. Clerk, can you confirm if there are speakers on the line to provide comments?
Yes, two registered speakers on the line.
Great. So we are looking to the first registered speaker. Is Terry Danoa on the line?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you clearly. Go ahead.
Hi, dear Mayor and counsel, I'm in favor of new development proposed at 1668 Alberni Road Street. I'm a small business owner. I own a small fruit convenience store up the road in the West End and love to see new buildings being built in this area. New buildings mean more residents, and more residents often translate to more foot traffic. Businesses have been hit hard through the COVID-19 pandemic, and I feel lucky having survived the impacts. It's not without its challenges still. But being said, I welcome more foot traffic that will potentially translate into customers for all of the businesses in the West End. Overall, new housing is needed and can benefit so many people. From a business perspective, bring these people in and more. Thank you for giving me time. I hope you will support this project like I do.
Great. I see no speakers, sorry, no questions to you, so thank you so much for calling in. There's a second speaker on the line, Tia Brar.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Wonderful. Dear Deputy Mayor and counsel, I am calling in today in support of 1668 1684 Alberni Street. I am currently a renter in the West End, and I love living here. I am also a student attending UBC. And although it's a bit of a commute to get to school, I wouldn't choose to live anywhere else. The West End is such a great community. The West End is full of older buildings, some of them beautifully maintained, but there are others that are in varying states of despair. While I appreciate the look of older buildings, I do think a mix of an evolving neighborhood is a good thing. We can't keep the West End stale. I really like the building design that was presented for 1668 1684 Alberni Street and think that it will positively elevate the neighborhood's aesthetic and potentially influence more of the neighborhood to keep buildings in good shape. Although there's no rental homes planned, I do believe that all housing helps improve our larger housing situation. It probably comes as no surprise that I had difficulty time trying to find a rental home in this neighborhood. New condominiums mean that people who might be renting today could potentially buy. I truly believe all types of housing frees up space for others and would likely have a positive impact on the overall rental market. More options is definitely a good thing. And thank you very much for taking the time to hear me out as I spoke today, and I hope to see this building pop up very soon.
Thank you for calling in. There are no questions to you, but again, really appreciate the time you've taken to speak to counsel.
Thank you so much for your time.
Great. Is Speaker Three on the line, Brooks Jeffrey?
Speaker Three is not on the line, Deputy Mayor.
Okay. I'm going to proceed with calling three times for speakers to this item. If there are any additional speakers who wish to speak to us, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the list. That number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. And there are no speakers in the council chambers. Clerk, are there any speakers on the line?
No additional speakers.
Thank you. I'll call again a second time. Any speakers wishing to speak on this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of the list. Phone number will be tweeted out, made available on the live stream. Are there any speakers on the line, clerk?
No additional speakers.
Great. I'll do my third call, and then we'll take a break. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445Pound before the close of this list. And that number will be tweeted out as well, but we will take now a five-minute break, counsel, and come back to see if there are any speakers at that time. counsel, and come back to see if there are any speakers at that time. Okay, counsel, we, welcome back, and Clerk, do we have any callers that have called in on this item?
No additional speakers.
Okay, given that there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed and as few or no public comments have been received on this item after 5:00 PM today and now suggests we close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions of staff and to make a decision. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
No, we don't, Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Staff, do you have any closing comments?
Thank you, staff would like to advise counsel that a rezoning memo was added to the agenda package, thanks.
That's great, thank you, it's good to have, so anything would have to be moved with the addition of the yellow memo or the rezoning memo. Counsel, do you have any questions for staff? And I see you have, we have some on the list, so Counselor DeGenova, first, over to you.
Thanks, I'm happy to move the recommendations along with the yellow memo, Chair.
Yes, we do have other speakers on the list, Counselor DeGenova?
Oh, okay.
That's fine, I'll second, Counselor.
Okay, so, well, that's fine, Counselor DeGenova has seconded, Counselor Kirby Young has, sorry, Counselor DeGenova has moved.
Move promotion with the yellow memo.
Yep, you've moved with the yellow memo, thank you, or with the additional memo from staff, and Counselor Kirby Young has seconded, so we are now into debate and decision. Any debate, Counselor DeGenova, I'll move us to the main queue, I'll get you on that list, just one second, go ahead.
To speak briefly in support of this project moving forward, while I do appreciate that this will generate CACs and appreciate staff's, you know, very clear answer that although we don't usually generally allocate CACs from one project to a specific amenity in the community, I do understand that the Aquatic Centre is in need of repair and appreciate that that is top of mind for our staff. But I also wanted to note that I really appreciate, considering I have constantly pushed for a more family-friendly Vancouver, the number of two and three-bedroom units that I see here in this project, and I think that it's really important to note that, I really appreciate in the staff report and including the referral report, you know, the attention to childcare and looking at really more than just housing, but livability and affordability for families. I appreciate that and I'll keep my comments brief here tonight, but I think that it is really important as we move forward that we look at the needs of families. Often, we're hearing of families that are in one-bedrooms and dens, and I think that it is important as we move forward, and while I realise that 23 renters will be, in a sense, displaced, I don't want to call it that because some of them may move back, I do believe that there is potential here and certainly the applicants along with staff work very hard to make sure that this will ensure that there is new housing opportunities for families in downtown Vancouver and the West End. So, thanks very much and I'll leave my comments there, Chair.
Great, thanks, Counselor DeGenova, over to you, Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, I'll say that the one thing that really stands out for me in this application, as we see a lot of our housing tenure across the city shifting away from strata generally to rental and recognising that we're going to need to continue to do that, is that it puts that significant pressure on delivering the community amenities and maintaining the livability in the City of Vancouver. And I think what stands out for me in this project is that it does generate a substantive CAC. And I was very happy to hear from staff, so I raised that truly the side of the Aquatic Centre part of the side of the building fell off and it needs renewal now. The West End Community Centre needs to be moved forward in terms of renewal of that really important facility in a highly populated area. And so I'm very happy to hear staff clearly articulate that that's sort of the intention, pending council's decision around the capital plan, is to really advance those specific projects, because I think that those are both pretty key in terms of the amount, the widespread benefit that they have to area residents. And the Aquatic Centre obviously would become a real destination serving aquatic facility as well, and we are definitely a city that values our pools, I can attest to that greatly. We've got a definitely passionate group of folks out there and it's something that it's really important to have, so I'm happy to hear that we're likely to see really significant traction in the capital plan on those two projects as a result of substantive contributions like that. So, I appreciate it and I will support the project.
Thanks, Counselor Kirby Young, Counselor Weep, go to you.
Yeah, I think that it's good to see.
Again, Counselor Weep, we're having trouble hearing you.
Yeah, I think it's good to, the CAC, I also like the water treatment, the green roof, the ability of the architectural design of the building, I think the public realm is well done. I also think some of the integration in the community and the play-off kind of, the way the shadowing and everything's done, this building's really well done. So, I will be supportive of the project, I think architecturally it's done really well. I think that the amenities are much needed and I appreciate the efforts done to make changes to the building, so we'll be supportive.
Thanks, Counselor Weep, I see no one else on the list, so Clerk, if you could move us to a vote, that would be great. And that vote does pass with Counselor Hardwick in opposition. So, that takes us to the end of the agenda and I just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, I think, I'm sorry, Counselor Hardwick, but I did think I heard Counselor Kirby Young first, but I'll put you down a second, Counselor Hardwick, all in favour?
Yay.
Yeah, or yay, great, any opposed, say nay?
Aye.
That was an aye, a little late, but that was a unanimous decision, it is carried and the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all, thank you staff very much for your presence here tonight and we'll see you all tomorrow.
Thanks, staff, thanks, everyone.
Goodnight, everyone, thank you.